I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, and this is our Prescott voting meeting, our fourth meeting today. Thanks for attending, everyone here in the crowd and online. Mayor Protem, introductions, announcements?
Well, I do have some announcements, and that's regarding all of the events that are going around Arizona's Christmas City, which we're proud is the city of Prescott. First of all, the Holiday Light Parade, which is always fun, hosted by the Prescott Downtown Partnership. It is on Saturday, November the 28th at 6:00 PM. That's actually one week from Saturday. That is so hard to believe, isn't it? On Cortez and Montezuma, and there will be a bonfire traditionally at the Mile High Middle School, so that'll be a fun evening. And then we have our 38th Christmas Parade, hosted by the Prescott Chamber, on Saturday, December the 5th. That will be at 1:00 PM, and we always march in it, which is a lot of fun. And Mayor Mangarelli is the grand marshal this year. Congratulations, Mayor. And then we will have the annual courthouse lighting and reading from Luke 2, which I love, by Ken Bennett. And that is the same day at 6:00 PM that night that we'll turn those beautiful lights on. And then Frontier Christmas at Charlotte Hall, following the courthouse lighting. And Akronite, we will have Akronite. It will be slimmed down a little bit, but it'll be on Friday, December the 11th, and it will be outdoors and mainly on Whiskey Row. The other events include Enchanted Christmas at Prescott Gateway Mall, November the 27th through the 30th, and that's something that Matt does with Matt's Saloon, and it's just absolutely gorgeous. And the Whiskey Row Boot Drop for our Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, excuse me, New Year's Eve, December 31st, between, at 10 o'clock, for those of us that do it early, and then midnight, so. A lot of great things going on in our city.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. The Boot Drop, the theme is "Give 2020 the Boot."
And I will second that. Thank you very much.
I will. I will third that. I will be there. You mentioned the courthouse lighting, and I just want to thank Jersey Lily Saloon and all the friends of Jersey Lily. $1,000 raise, which is a new record, tremendous community support for the courthouse lighting fundraiser at Jersey Lily. So thank you, everyone out there that contributed to that. Keeping the lights on. All right, we're gonna have an invocation by Pastor Jason Phillips with Calvary Chapel of Prescott, and pledge led by Councilmember Rusin.
In Psalm 119, 105, he says, "Your word is a lamp to my feet and a light to my path." And couldn't think of a better foundation that we can have right now in this season than to turn the light on and allow the Lord to lead and guide us. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this time. I thank you for this committee, and what a foundation of men and women in this city. Lord, I just ask that you would watch over this meeting and that you would have your hand upon it. We ask, Lord, for wisdom and direction. And, Lord, I thank you that I can wake up, and many in Prescott, and be thankful for what great leadership we have. So we ask that you continue to do that work. We give you this time, and we give you this whole meeting. We commit it into your hands, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Phillips. Tell Raj I said hello. All right, let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusin.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you for that. Let's go to proclamations.
Small Business Saturday, November 28th, 2020.
This is a proclamation Small Business Saturday, whereas the government of Prescott, Arizona, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. Whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of employees in the private sector in the United States, and 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions of these small businesses that make their communities great. Whereas, 96% of customers who plan to shop Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently owned retailers and restaurants that they have never been there before and would otherwise not have tried. And whereas, 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly, excuse me, significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas, Prescott, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boosts the local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, why can't get that right? And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And now, therefore, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday. And he urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Yay! Yes. On behalf of the chamber and all the small businesses, we thank you for this proclamation, and we encourage everyone to please shop locally. There you go. Big bang. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Good job, Councilman. All right, let's go to consent agenda. Would any member like to pull anything from consent today? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Pass this, 7-0.
All right, let's move on to the regular agenda item 8A, please.
Approval of city contract number 2021-071 for the purchase of two side loader curb tender refuse vehicles from Rush Truck Center using Arizona State Contract Number CTR 041812 pricing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Craig Dossith, Public Works. As announced, this is to purchase two new side load curb tender garbage trucks, garbage and/or recycled trucks. These trucks are replacing 12-year-old units that have been in the fleet quite a few years and done a lot of work. Our timing on these, these are the last two vehicles that we have in our group to replace, and the timing is kind of late in the year, but that was on purpose. We held back after we received our first curb tender types of units last spring in order to evaluate how they worked for us, how the service from the company was provided, and ultimately, just depending how good a unit was. So what we found from that, it came through, is that, on an average, the two units that we have in service this year are packing the loads by an additional ton to a ton and a half of material on every load. So that equates to the potential of 80 to 150 additional cans that can be picked up by those units before we have to go back to the transfer station. So that then equates to less miles, less wear and tear on the tires, less fuel, everything by this. So it has turned out that these units are benefiting us in several ways that we did not anticipate from our previous units. So that timing has definitely paid off to evaluate that compared to previous units that we've used. So these trucks, due to the age and condition, are being recommended by both Public Works as well as Fleet Service Division, and were reviewed by the FAB committee for review in this budget year. They were utilizing state contract that's in place in order to accomplish this purchase, and then ultimately, they will be an internal lease purchase in order to fund the payment of those and then paid back internally. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Craig. If we could only retrofit these for fire, then they're half price compared to a fire truck. Maybe you can get chief to work on that. Any questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2021-071.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Pass this, 7-0.
Item 8B, please.
Approval of city contract number 2021-078 with Arizona Communications Network for a one-year professional services agreement for provision of the city of Prescott government channel broadcasting, government programming, and government social media content.
Mayor and Council, John Heine, Community Outreach Manager. We're seeking today approval of a one-year professional services agreement with Arizona Communications Network for operation of public access Channel 64, including city meetings, city-generated content such as Prescott Today TV Show, city manager Facebook Live, and other city-generated programming. ACN will work with the city of Prescott Communications Office to generate some of this new and existing video and social media content on behalf of the city. ACN will also work with the city staff to operate and maintain all of the equipment that was formerly owned by Prescott Media Center and is now in possession of the city of Prescott. So just a little background to remind you, back in July, we were notified that the Prescott Media Center intends to fully dissolve as a nonprofit organization. And on September 8th, the council did approve an amendment to our contract with Prescott Media Center, essentially turning over the equipment and the operation of their former operation to the city of Prescott. So following that conversation with Prescott Media Center, the city manager and I met with Lynn LaMaster, formerly of Prescott E-News, and Robert Milligan, former station manager at the Prescott Media Center, to determine their interest in taking over operation of Channel 64 and the associated activities. We have attached the original proposal from ACN, including some biographical information and background on both Lynn and Robert. And both Lynn and Robert are in the audience in case there are any questions. And this is, just the financial impact is, this is in an amount not to exceed $78,000. Just for your information, we originally budgeted each year about $92,000 for the Prescott Media Center contract, so this would come in a little bit below that. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Questions, comments from the council? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment about how excited I am to have Lynn and Rob help us with this. They're both amazing professionals in the work that they do, and I just am thrilled to see them associated with us, so. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. Congratulations, and I think this is very important to continue public access in the interest of truth and transparency in our government. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2021-078.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Pass this, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let's go to item 8C, please.
Adoption of ordinance number 2020-1735, an ordinance of the Council of the city of Prescott, Arizona, amending city code Title IV business regulations by adopting a new section 4-20 relating to the regulation of recreational marijuana, establishing a purpose, setting forth definitions prohibiting marijuana on public property, prohibiting marijuana testing facilities, and regulating marijuana establishments, establishing regulations for personal use at an individual primary residence, authorizing retail sales for marijuana and marijuana products, imposing fees, setting forth violations, and providing for enforcement and penalties. That's the most times I've ever said marijuana.
Mr. Palladini?
Yes, Mayor. So as we all know, Proposition 207 was approved by the voters just a few weeks ago, which imposed or created, legalized, I guess, the use of recreational marijuana and a number of accompanying actions. So I wanted to kind of go over what the proposition allows us to do and what it prohibits us from doing. In other words, when the state law takes effect, which is probably early December, the city has a certain amount of authority to regulate and to prohibit, and certain authority, and certain things that it cannot do. So let me go through what the Prop 207 statutes will say. That under the Act, local governments can take certain actions to regulate recreational marijuana, can enact reasonable zoning or land use regulations that limit the use of land for marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities to specified areas, limit the number of marijuana establishments or marijuana testing facilities, prohibit marijuana establishments or marijuana testing facilities, regulate the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishment and marijuana testing facilities. And marijuana establishment is the retail sales location by definition. We can establish restrictions on public signage regarding marijuana and establishments and testing facilities, and we could prohibit or restrict delivery within the city. What we cannot do is adopt any kind of ordinance that's more restrictive than a comparable ordinance, regulation, or rule that applies to nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries. And that's an important thing to note, and I'll get to that in a second. We cannot make the operation of a marijuana establishment or testing facility unduly burdensome if we don't prohibit the establishment or testing facility. We can't adopt any rule or regulation that conflicts with the Prop 207. It's going to be a state statute or rules adopted by DHS under that chapter. We cannot prohibit the transportation of marijuana on public roads. We can prohibit the delivery, we just can't, you know, to individual users, but we can't prohibit the transportation. We can't restrict or interfere with the ability of a dual licensee, which would be a licensee that currently has a, is a nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary. That's what a dual licensee is, or an entity eligible to become a dual licensee to operate both a nonprofit marijuana dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary, and a marijuana establishment, basically a for-profit retail sales location, as long as they're cooperatively at a shared location. And that's an important note, too. And then we can't do anything that, again, is inconsistent or prohibits or restricts any conduct that's already permitted by the state law. So the city can't do things that the state law doesn't allow it to do. And the penalties under our city code can't exceed what the state law allows. Now, those things were important because when medical marijuana facilities were allowed in the state, I know it's more than eight years ago because it was already adopted when I got here, the city at the time chose not to regulate, chose not to zone or regulate medical marijuana facilities. So Prescott has, at this time, based on its population, a single medical marijuana facility, the one on Merritt Street. So because the city didn't ban marijuana, medical marijuana facilities at that time, we can't ban recreational sales facilities. We can regulate, and we can require that the recreational sales facility is cooperatively in the same location as the medical facility, and limit the recreational sales establishments only to a medical licensee. And that's what the ordinance does in main part. So what the, in summary, what the ordinance does, if approved, it will prohibit the use, sale, cultivation, manufacture, production, or distribution of marijuana or marijuana products on property owned, controlled, or operated by the city. What it will also do, and this is a thing, I need to read this because I did some additions after talking to some folks at the, let me make sure I have the right one, at the county attorney's office. So in the, in your, I believe you received from me a revised ordinance draft, and I need to, per our city charter, I need to read the additions. In the definition of consume, consuming, and consumption, the original language says the me, the means, the act of ingesting, inhaling, or otherwise introducing marijuana into the human body. What I added was the language that says, "including the inhaling or exhaling of smoke or vapor from an electronic device can be used to deliver marijuana or marijuana products to a person, including but not limited to electronic or vaping cigarette equipment or pipe." So that's the new language. So that would, if adopted, the current law says that smoking marijuana in a public place is prohibited under state law. So we can further add that to our city code so that our officers have a concise city code rather than state law as the violation. It's the same, it's a Class 1 misdemeanor. But we added to that consumption language, and then further on, the language that I added, let me find it here. Further on, I added that the public, that not only is smoking marijuana not allowed on city property, but that the, oh, here it is, that consuming marijuana or marijuana products in a public place or open space is also prohibited. So vaping would be prohibited in a public place, you know, the consumption of edibles would be prohibited in a public place, probably a little bit harder to enforce because they may look just like, you know, non-marijuana products. But I think the vaping issue became, was a concern. That's allowed under the state law, under the Prop 207, that the city can prohibit things that are otherwise allowed, activities that are otherwise allowed if it's on city property. So even though the state, the proposition expressly bans the smoking of marijuana on city property, we can also ban the other ingestion by way of vaping or edibles on city property as well. So those are the two ads that I sent to you that I just read to be consistent with our city charter. So we also prohibit the, so the code makes, prohibits the use and sale and cultivation, manufacture illegal on city property, makes unlawful smoking or consumption on city property, which means our parks, Goldwater Lake, it doesn't have to be in the city necessarily because sidewalk streets, you name it, anything that's city property, city hall. Maybe we need it here, I don't know, but. But also prohibits the operation of a marijuana establishment except or authorized for a dual licensee who operates both a nonprofit medical and a for-profit marijuana establishment cooperatively. So essentially, what this ordinance will do is say, if the only recreational marijuana sales location in the city will be, has to be located, jointly located, at the current medical marijuana facility. They can move, but they can't have separate facilities, so it has to be jointly operated. The current facility could move to some other location. Then if there is a move, they would have to be, it would be subject to these conditions. It can't be more, there can't be more than one establishment operated in the city. It'll be allowed only in non-residential zoning districts, meaning commercial or industrial. Can't be within 300 feet of a residentially zoned property, can't be within 300 feet of preschool, kindergarten, elementary, secondary, or high school, place of worship, public park, or community center, so there's a little bit of a buffer zone. Think about liquor stores and bars and things like that that have those buffer zones as well. Can't be located in a, or must be located in a permanent building on an established foundation and not include any temporary portable mobile facilities, trailers, those kinds of things. There's a security concern there. Operating hours proposed 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which I believe is broader than what the medical facility, I went online and just looked, their operating hours are actually less than that, but this is what's recommended. This model code, by the way, was drafted by a team of city attorneys from out throughout the state in conjunction with the league, and so they coordinated this model code. We can't, oh, this also prohibits drive-through and delivery services, so unlike a Walgreens or McDonald's who can't have, you know, we would prohibit drive-through marijuana, recreational marijuana sales. Would also prohibit the consumption of the marijuana or the product on the sales site. Essentially, this is for home, the idea behind all this is this is for home use. If people want to have recreational marijuana, they basically have to do it in their private The signage limitation is that they would be prohibited from displaying marijuana products from outside the premises, so essentially, you know, you can't have window displays and things like that. And then the operator would have to submit a written security plan to the Prescott PD that basically describes their security operations to prevent break-ins and things like that. Would also ban standalone testing facilities, cultivation facilities, and manufacturing facilities. So the recreational facility can test and can cultivate and can manufacture the product, but it has to be done at the, at the sales facility, not separate. Individual at-home possession, consumption, and processing are permitted under the Prop 207, but there are certain conditions. A person can cultivate, has to be at least 21 years old, person would have to, can cultivate up to six plants, two people who have, or at least 21 years old, both of them have to be 21 years old, not cumulatively, can have up to 12 plants in a primary resident. And then more than 12 plants is illegal. So if there's four or five adults in the house, it's still 12 plants is the maximum. And then there's some other limitations about cooking and things like that to make, I'm assuming it, I'm not a scientist or a pot dealer, but I think this is, you make hash, hashish, this prohibits the making of hashish. And then if there are any dust, fume, smoke, things like that, and then anything from the house, that would be also prohibited. So has to be kind of closely contained or confined if there's any growing or things like that. And then the cultivation at the house has to be limited. You can't, you have to basically use a closet, greenhouse, or other enclosed area. You can't, you're, hard to enforce, but I think this is what the league recommends, so that you can't, you know, use a bedroom in a house as a growing facility is the idea. And then the sale of marijuana or marijuana products would be subject to our sales tax. So that's a sort of summary of the ordinance in front of you. It's the, I would call it the most sort of conservative approach that we're allowed to go, because like I said, we can't ban it, and I think I would recommend going with that route because we can always, as we go forward and we see the impacts or the lack of impacts on, you know, out of this type of ordinance, can always loosen things up down the road at some point. But if you start off more loosely, it's very, very difficult to sort of ratchet things back. You're sort of taking away rights. The other thing the ordinance does is it includes an emergency clause, which makes, means that if approved, once it's signed by the mayor, it goes into effect immediate. There's not a 30-day delay period. And the reason for that is, like I said before, when Prop 207 goes into effect, once the governor certifies it and signs it, which is anticipated, it could be as early as December, early December, anything that affects land use could trigger a Prop 207 issue. So we want this to go into effect now so that the land use, or the land use type regulations, this is not, we didn't put this in the zoning code, we put it in the city business code, but there still are, there are some land use type limitations, regulations. So recommending that we adopt it by emergency clause, and that takes a supermajority to do that, but that's the way to make sure we sort of avoid any kind of Prop 207 issues by having these restrictions. So submachine questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, John. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. I have a question. A public place in the middle of our downtown that's not in our jurisdiction is the Courthouse Square. Any word about what the county is doing about this?
Actually, just to clarify, Courthouse Square is in Prescott's jurisdiction. It is annexed and part of the city. It's not a county island. It's owned by the county, the property is owned by the county, but law and The property is owned by the county, but law enforcement on the square is primarily Prescott PD. Chief Black is shaking her head yes. Inside the courthouse is primarily the county sheriff's department and their security, but on the square itself, the primary enforcement agency is.
Thank you.
So because the plaza and the square is, the plaza and the courthouse are in the city, this ordinance would apply there on the plaza.
Good question. Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Yes, I just want to thank our attorney, John Palladini, for being up on this and that we be as conservative as we can. I think most of us are pretty disappointed that Prop 207 passed. Some of us worked pretty hard to defeat it, so I think the stricter that we can be for the city of Prescott, the better. So thank you, John, for doing that.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Mayor, I'm just concerned about the county. How many facilities would be allowed within unincorporated Yavapai County?
I really don't know. In terms of growing, you mean, or sales?
Yeah, any of these.
I don't know. I haven't really had a chance to talk with the county attorney's office or the county about what the county proposes or plans to do. The county has essentially the same authority we do in terms of how it can regulate. I do know that the medical marijuana facility that appears to be in Prescott Valley along the highway is actually a county island. So that's actually the one on, I forget, sort of near Culvers and that. I think it's in that area generally. I'm not quite sure, but lest anyone think that I know where it's at. But it is a county island. I do know that for fact because I checked with our planner about it. And the county does have a zoning ordinance that limits, I believe limits, medical marijuana the county adopted it way back when. But I don't know the number. And I will say this too, just that our, we ban the growing or the cultivation of marijuana in the city, not by anything except for our water code, because our water code doesn't allow our water to be used for agricultural uses. So there was a proposal a number of years back about a growth facility out near the airport, and basically we said, you can't have water for it. And they couldn't do an agricultural well, so that's how we kind of prevent it. I do know, again, for fact, that there's a number of growing facilities out in Chino Valley.
Right.
But I don't know, I really haven't done any amount of research about what goes on kind of outside the city.
Yeah, I know that's beyond our jurisdiction, but I was just curious what might happen since we have so many, so many borders.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be something that, you know, we certainly could approach the county administration and find out what their plan is if they, I don't think the county's done anything yet. I don't know if they're going to or not. I don't know when, I think, I know there's a county board of supervisors meeting in early December, I want to say, the first or second.
Second, I think.
Yeah, so maybe there's something on that agenda. We can certainly check and get back to you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? From council, public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained motion. And John, will this motion include your last minute?
It will, it will include that, and then it require the state law on emergency measures. There's an emergency provision in the ordinance itself, and it requires a three-quarter, 75% majority.
So if they reference 2020-1735, that'll include the amendments?
With those changes.
Okay. Entertained motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-1735.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right. Thank you, John. Let's move to item 8D, please.
Approval of additional funding for the Granite Creek Corridor Master Plan implementation in the amount of $520,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Tyler Goodman from the city manager's office. Last Tuesday, we brought forward to you approval for us to apply for a million-dollar grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. That grant will allow us to fund more than half of the estimated costs and proposals that came out of the master planning process for the Granite Creek Corridor. Our plan was to simultaneously apply for grant funding from either the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality or the Arizona Water Protection Fund to fund the other portions that aren't eligible for this grant that you approved last week. Both of those funding sources are either dried up, or they have other priorities and they say we're not going to be helping with this project. So the options are basically, we could wait a year to see if the grant funding comes through again through the state if they appropriate it. But what we are bringing to you is to ask if you're willing to move forward with implementing the entire master plan all at once. The costs that aren't covered by the Land and Water Conservation Fund are basically the in-creek improvements. This has to do with stormwater, where it interacts with the trail, some other vegetation and other things that are identified in the master plan. There is a large portion of the master plan that, it's all tied together, so it all affects one another. So this item is to seek your approval to allocate another $520,000 towards the project on top of what you approved last week, which was a $500,000 city share for a $1 million grant. Speaking with Joe Baines, we expect that there will be some in-kind services, things done throughout the process, that it probably won't add up to 520,000 at the end of the day for these portions, but we're looking for that budget allocation. We'd also come back with contracts for all of these services. So this isn't writing a check. It's basically saying the council's supportive of moving forward, doing this all in one phase, which we suspect to be April of 2021 to April of 2022, and will of course come back with contracts for construction and the implementation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. I just have a question. I saw on the plan, there was a plan to remove elm trees. Is this going to be like all of our full-grown elms down there or just the smaller nuisance ones?
Mostly the smaller, the understory growth. The master plan does call for over the span of at least a decade to strategically remove trees, the invasive species, which is elm, but that's up to our determination, and it would be done very slowly. So while some of that cost would be covered by this funding, we'd probably with Joe Baines work in the future to look at tree removal little by little. And APS has already told us that they're happy to partner with us, especially where they come in contact or close to the power lines. So they're already on board to help where they can.
Thank you.
Councilman Good?
So how much were we obligated to spend after our last meeting?
After the last meeting, it was a 50% match, so 500,000, plus a 10% charge to the fund, the Land and Water Conservation Fund for their administration, which is 50,000. So total is 550 from last week.
So now we would be in for a million and 90?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I tell you, I felt it was a pretty big stretch last time, but I felt it was worth it because we would be eligible for a substantial amount of grant funding. Can you explain, other than the fact that these two grant sources were already obligated to other projects and therefore no money was available? And are they on the same type of fiscal year where there might be grant funds available in July?
The, so ADEQ has other projects, and they had other priorities, that's what they told me. As far as funding, I don't know when their fiscal cycle is. I would guess it's whatever the state is, which is the same as ours, but the Water Protection Fund, who we received grant funding for the master plan itself, and we were planning on going back to cover all of this extra, or I should say, it would have been a 50% match as well. The funding has not been allocated, or it was withdrawn due to COVID. So it's kind of up in the air if the state will reallocate funding towards that or not. They don't know yet.
But we won't know until the legislature reconvenes.
Correct, yeah. And it could be, depending on the cycles, it could be from now, if they were to receive grant funding, we could probably apply at the end of next year. So we'd be looking at two phases of implementation. It would stretch the project out quite a bit, and then there's some negative impacts that could occur. If you have to go back in to do this type of work, it might tear up the trail more, then you're looking at kind of backfilling it. It might create some other issues. Certainly overcome, we could overcome them, but it might create some other issues.
So this additional amount would come out of general fund or where?
General fund.
Boy, I think we still have a narrow Republican majority in the House, 31-29, as far as I understand. We've got two new recently elected representatives for our legislative district, and I know I've talked to both of them about their request to the speaker to be put on different committees, and some of the discussions were that they're looking for support for some of these unique challenges within our legislative district. So, you know, personally, I think moving to fund the entire amount of the general fund is just too big of a stretch. I'd like to see if we could talk to our legislative elected representatives and see if they can maybe leverage their votes to try to get some priority movement in this area so that we might be able to have some access to some grant funding. That's a lot of money.
It is.
Councilman Sisca?
Thanks, Mayor. Tyler, this is 520,000. If we would have gotten the grant, would we have had to put in 260,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained motion?
Mayor, I move to approve additional funding for the Granite Creek Corridor Master Plan in the amount of $520,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes six one.
All right. Let's move on to item 8E, please.
Appointment of Mayor Protam?
All right. This is something I had requested, and I want to give a little background before we move forward, and Councilman Blair can keep me on the straight and narrow here. There's not a lot in the, I know it's kind of rough to rely on him to do that, but there's not a lot in the charter that speaks to the appointment of Mayor Protam other than, you know, the council appoints a Mayor Protam, pretty much. And so historically, this has coincided with elections, and it's been typically the mayor's choice of who they would like to serve as Mayor Protam, coinciding with an election. Is that fair? Yep. So that's been historically the case. As I looked at this with Mayor Protam, I thought it might be good to do this annually, to give opportunities for council members to serve in this position. And so that's why I brought this up today. I want to say some things about Mayor Protam, but I'm going to wait until after the nomination. Reserve those comments for then, but at this point, I would like to make a motion to approve the annual designation by council of a Mayor Protam at the second regular meeting in November.
Second. So have a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilman Good?
So this will be a change in the city charters. I think the city charter doesn't actually mention a specific time or term for Mayor Protam.
It doesn't.
So we didn't have to change that.
It's something to be considered in your review of the charter.
So we will just, under your authority as mayor, designate this on an annual basis?
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right. Mayor Protam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So when Mayor Mingarelli talked to me about stepping aside and allowing Alexa to become Mayor Protam, and I said, only if I could do the nomination. So it just gives me great honor. We've all grown to absolutely love Alexa.
Point of order? I'd like to open the floor to nominations because I would like to make a nomination, please.
That's fine. Mayor Protam has the floor at this point. John, how do you want to proceed?
The standard practice is that if currently the Mayor Protam is, I think, making a motion, and so if there's a motion second, and there's a vote, and the majority rules in this case, that's the end of discussion. If that vote fails, then the council can take up a second motion.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protam?
So I can continue with, I just wanted to say a few words about Alexa. I've gotten to know her quite well and absolutely adore her. I think she's an amazing young lady. She came, she basically graduated from Prescott High School in 2015. Amazing, here we are, five years later, look where she is. She graduated from A. H. S. Barrett Honor College. When Alexa got here, she asked me to write a recommendation for the Truman Scholarship program for her, and I was really happy when she was awarded that Truman Scholarship. And it's a prestigious national scholarship awarded to college students who are dedicated to a career in public service. It's when I wrote that recommendation that I can't think of anybody that was, is better to receive this. Like I said, I've really grown to adore her and to have enjoyed mentoring her, and I look forward to doing that in the future. I've already told her, I called her immediately and said, whatever you need, I'm here for you. So I would like to make a motion to make Alexa show our Mayor Protam.
Second. Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Further discussion? Point of order?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Please open for discussion.
Reading the duties of the mayor, mayor will be chairman of the council and preside over its deliberations. He or she will be chief executive of the city government for all purposes and recognized by the governor for purposes of military law and civil defense, and shall have executive and no administrative duties. So Mayor Protam would be sitting in for the mayor should there be absence or disability under these conditions. Well, we are currently under executive orders by the mayor, by the governor, establishing certain health and safety conditions throughout the state and of course in our city. So being able to designate someone that has the experience, executive experience and authority should, as we're seeing, a pretty significant increase in some of our concerns for COVID, et cetera, that might generate additional restrictions throughout the community. I would expect that we could have someone that has a little more experience and executive experience to be able to deal with potential serious challenges for the next year. I don't see that executive order being retracted anytime soon by the governor, and it could be quite a challenging experience should you not be able to be available for your decision-making authority. So those are my comments.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
I guess, you know, we're all duly elected, and, you know, the citizens of Prescott elected me based on my judgment-making abilities. You know, my other job besides being a council member is being the health and safety coordinator for Prescott Unified School District. All I do, all day, every day, is COVID-19. I think that makes me exceptionally qualified in this particular circumstance to be, you know, a main, a contact person, someone representing Prescott in decisions if Mayor Mingarelli is unavailable, because I do have experience with COVID-19 in particular. I think your assumption that I don't have executive experience is rooted in potentially my age, and that's not something I can change. I can't give you a few more revolutions around the sun, I just can't. But I will tell you, I've lived in Prescott for 23 years. I've worked in a restaurant, I've worked retail, I've worked for a local nonprofit, I've worked in a law firm, and I work for a school district now. I'm a national scholar. I have, in one month, I will have my master's degree. I'm not sure what else I could give to this council in terms of my experience, so I guess I'm just disappointed and, you know, disappointed that that's your opinion, that I wouldn't be able to make decisions in the best interest of Prescott if there were a situation where Mayor Mingarelli was unavailable. And if that happened, I would absolutely work with my other council members to make decisions that are best for Prescott, to pool our experience together and to move Prescott in the direction that we need to go. So that would be my response to that. So that would be my response to that.
That's very good. And I have complete faith in Councilwoman Cho being Mayor Protem. I fully endorse her as Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem, more?
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to say is I think it's really important that Mayor Mingarelli chooses the Mayor Protem that he wants to work with. I, I've, I've been honored to be Mayor Protem for three years. I know Alexa Cho, I know that she will seek out advice. Councilman, that was one of my concerns as well initially when I first heard this, but I also, I know Alexa, and she's not your typical 21-year-old, I'll tell you. And she is an amazing young lady, and we're all here to help her, and I, I would hope that we would all show support for what the mayor wants to do.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. Oh, I would just like to bring up the point that Councilman Good is a veteran, and one of the duties of the mayor is be recognized by the governor for purposes of military law and civil defense, and I think with his military and veteran experience, I think he would have been a better choice. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Blair?
Oh, everybody's talked, so I got to say, as a senior councilman here of 20 years and duly elected five times, I wholeheartedly support Alexa. And in the 20 years, we've had a lot of very specific issues that have challenged this community, and I don't see her falling down on any of those, so I would support that.
Thank you for those comments. Councilman Sishka?
Well, I have to put my two cents worth in, maybe three cents, but Alexa, as an aside, Alexa did get an Olson Scholarship when she graduated from Prescott High School, and we did bet on the right pony, so Alexa, I'm totally behind your nomination.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, please vote.
Passes 5-2.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, Alexa. It's going to be a good year. I want to say a few things about Mayor Protem, Billy Orr.
That's enough.
I, I wouldn't be sitting here without a lot of support from a lot of people, particularly my wife and, and some close friends, and Billy Orr has been extremely helpful to me as a rookie mayor, so to speak. She was the perfect pick to support me and encourage me and give me wisdom when I needed it, perspective. I couldn't have think of a better person to be Mayor Protem for my first three years, and I'm deeply grateful for your support and always will be. Look back fondly at those three years and, and just the time that we had together to help move Prescott forward. There's not a person that I, I can think of that would have been a better mentor, and I look up to tremendously, and thank you so much for your service to our community, and thank you for your time as Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember when we were sitting in Joe Howard's office, and Michael and I went over to talk to Joe about something, don't even remember what it was, but I remember saying to Greg, are you ready to step up and be mayor? And Joe Howard goes, Billy, you're in my office, what are you doing? Stealing my guy here. So it's, it's been an honor, Mayor, and, and the council. You know, it's been a joy working with all of you, and so let's go forward, and congratulations, Alexa.
Thank you. And I have a small token of my appreciation here for...
Oh, how pretty.
I thought it might be a shop local.
Yeah, really.
Could have put it in the shop locally.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, thank you so much.
All right, our quote comes from Saint Augustine today. Saint Augustine tells us, pray as though everything depended on God, work as though everything depended on you. This meeting is adjourned.